...good idea to at least get moving on this, so. You know, Mike's ready, I'm ready, the department directors are ready, we're ready to move on this. Paul's not okay with it. We didn't want to start if there was a change of heart. He did run before, but then.
Yeah, I'm okay with him in the board.
I'm okay with him.
I think it's a good idea. I think you need to have a long range plan.
Yeah, and I can make you up on here that there is a maximum possible rate of seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, because this is really just going to be a start, and it may not be much more than that. But from our perspective, this wasn't going to be a high, high-priced item. We're just trying to, we're getting our feet wet too, to see if this works for us, and if this is the right sort of direction, even for our township, the way we operate organizationally, so. It's new for us, unfamiliar with it, and we're from a taxable standpoint, actually dealing it. So I think for all of us, I think even including Mike, this is going to be an adventure. But I think it's one we're willing to take. Okay, I think we're decided. Okay, we'll start on this, we'll certainly keep, but you're going to be a part of this. You're going to be a big part of it, because ultimately, the strategy we devised, you're going to be saying that's the way we want to go. So, we'll be back in touch in the near future.
I did want to ask you something about, is there going to be any time management studies?
No.
All of this?
No, this won't get into that level of detail, it's more global. We could do that, but this is more of a global, you know, idea where we're going to head for the future. Sorry, I can't.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jeffries. I was saying, in the engineer conference, you're under the pressure tonight. Any time you're further, before comments.
I guess I have one. A few residents were here, I guess, maybe last month or the week, month before. And we had a meeting about some investigations for some road millings. We got a report dated April 12th for the investigation delivered to the board commissioners. And I think it's only right that we would make that public and available for the public to read that and what we got back to the information. So I would make that an informed motion.
Second. I'll second it.
Did you mention?
I personally believe that we should discuss it in the executive session before we reach the public, because I have some issues with the present report.
We have to take public input, because it's on the agenda. You have to add to the agenda first.
So you're adding something to the agenda, you have to see public comment on it.
Think you might add to the agenda.
So that's really your motion?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I understand, yeah, I understand that there's a motion to place on the agenda, on a discussion, and putting out to the public the report that you received. There's a second. You should vote on that and then public comment.
Take one.
Just put it on the agenda, yes.
All big say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no?
No.
All Mayor Jeffries.
Roll call Commissioner Harold.
I don't think he should participate.
Okay, he should, I apologize, since that's his name. Commissioner Hygge.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertini.
No.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Fasenda.
No.
Commissioner Casero.
Yes.
And Commissioner Martino.
No.
So that was a tied motion.
Since it's a motion to do something, it fails. There has to be a majority to put the thing to the public at this point and put it out for public.
And we clarify when we voted. So that was to add to the agenda. For what purpose?
For the purpose, I think, that the next motion would have been from Commissioner Hygge's to place it out to the public.
Okay, alright. Seeing having that failed, perhaps the motion would be in order to, since the report clearly, in my opinion, shows evidence of wrongdoing of a criminal nature. Perhaps we should, rather than discuss releasing it to the public, simply take it out of our hands and give it to the Attorney General's office, in particular to an agent Bob Sorrelli. And wash our hands of the matter altogether at this time. And I will put that in the form of a motion to add to the agenda, whatever we totally have to do.
I'll second that.
So, alright, I got a question being there, so what do we need to do if we wanted, if we, if I told you to discuss it in the executive session first? First, does it need to be added to the public, to the agenda to put it in the executive session?
I think, I think that his motion and subject matter is not executive session material. Understand, you have certain exceptions applied to executive session. One of which is employees, you know, if you have reason to discipline or some other censorship of employee. If it was involving litigation, you could go into executive session. But I think his motion is such that he's not asking to discuss any of those topics, because unfortunately, Mr. Harold is not an employee. He doesn't fit within that exception, he doesn't fit, there isn't, this township doesn't have a remedy to bring some sort of conclusion to the report. Dave's an elected official, just like everybody else up here. This council can't disenfranchise him from that. And I would suggest to you that you are, you're without jurisdiction to really do much of anything. I want you to know that if Mr. Gray wanted to as an individual, I think he could do exactly what he is put on the, in a form of a motion to prosecute criminally, or have it looked at, investigated criminally. I think any individual on the township has standing to do that. But this board really doesn't have standing to say, you should, you, Mr. Attorney General Schutter shouldn't review this from a criminal aspect. I will say that the Attorney General's office may well say, well, you know, if the township thinks it's worth looking at, I'll take a look at it. But again, you don't have standing to bring any kind of action, you don't have a dog in the fight, is what I'm saying. And it's, so it's not really executive session material.
Okay, got it. My next question is, why are we naming a specific individual here?
I believe we all voted on that in the public meeting.
The given specific individual, the Attorney General?
The report, I believe you voted yes, that you would like to investigate the stolen road millings. Did you not?
Idea.
Every board member on period.
True idea.
Voted yes.
Yep.
To investigate stolen road millings, did they not?
True idea.
And the officer that testified up here did state a name. So I would believe that everyone in the public does know, and I believe that's in public, it was in the newspaper, it was on the news. I believe that's public knowledge.
I get that, Seth, but why are we giving it to a specific individual, the Attorney General's office?
Yeah, it's a way to, which you come up with, certainly to do.
Because I believe there's an interest in it by this investigator. If you would like to turn it over to the Attorney General's office in general and let them handle it, that's fine with me too.
But, you know, like.
Let them decide.
I didn't just tell Attorney Counsel, he mentioned a certain name.
Well, what if I'm motion that we give it to the AG's office?
And I think his motion is such to put, is to put it on the agenda, I believe there's a second. So you have to vote on that.
And I, I will say, to follow up on Bruce, I agree with Bruce completely, of course. This is not executive session material, because we are not talking about discipline of an employee or anything of that nature. We're not talking about putting a letter in somebody's file, or giving somebody a suspension. We're talking about criminal act, and although this board did grant immunity to an employee in exchange for truthful testimony, that immunity only applies to discipline within our policies as Northampton Township.
And that employee.
And that employee, correct. I don't believe we have any standing to judge the criminal act. So we need to hand it to a law enforcement agency outside of our political realm and with which we have no ties. So in my opinion, Attorney General's office is the proper place, and we should move forward.
Why not to come and visit to the AG's?
Because there are close political ties and friendships with the county. We are all aware of that, and rather than put those people in a position of cornflake, I think it best that we steer clear of all of the local agencies.
Well, that's right, my concern, when you mention a name.
Okay, I would root the name, so that should go through your pick's heart still.
But that's still saying this report will end up with.
I don't know that, I don't even know the person.
Well, then why do you mention the name?
You have to mention it, you mentioned the name for one, for a reason.
For a reason, because I would.
But so.
I do not know it.
And there was.
I was told that they're interested in it, so why are we fighting?
Why are you giving all this?
The question is, why are you trying to cover it up?
I'm not trying to cover up, what I want to know is why certain.
I answered that. You just don't like the answer, I can't help that.
Because I don't believe, I don't believe you're telling the truth.
I don't, I don't need your approval, I don't care about your approval. The statements stand on objective merit, we need to move forward.
I believe all of us as commissioners wanted to investigate this, or you wanted to vote yes, every single one of us voted yes. And now all of a sudden, we want to put the brakes and hold it.
Some of us, some of us wanted to put the brakes on it before we got to this point, so let's talk about who's been trying to stall the whole thing from day one. Tony, Mr. Fasenda.
What they did.
Look at your email, they said, I want to stop this investigation.
Does that mean you should look at your Facebook posts?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, it's public, everything I put out there is absolutely public.
Your insensitive Facebook post that you post?
What do I know?
Want to make it work?
If it's relevant to this, by all means.
Millings investigation is in, OJ did it.
Yeah.
You said that.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Most people find it rather humorous, I was actually approached by that and commended for that stringing people along of interest to keep it in the front burner, which is what we need to do right now.
You find that people lost their vibe, you can do for that. Family loss, two loved ones, you know, you.
What you said was offensive.
So I guess the only question is.
I would find that none, no, not at all surprising.
Yeah.
The only question I have for all of the board commissioners, if you don't want to make it public, I think we have a right to let the public know what's going on. And if you want to send it to the AG's office, I think that's fine as well, and if you don't want, they, they can keep it, and not make it public. But all us as commissioners, I believe there's a large group of citizens here, the past two meetings, they wanted to know about what happened with this, where is the report? They wanted to know where the report was. So we have the report now, and for us to say all of a sudden now we don't want to move forward, that we have information provided to us, I think that's wrong, and obviously, I mean, you can say, for whatever reason, you don't want to make it, send it to the AG's office, that's fine, you have that right, but you got to answer to all these residents why you don't want to do that, and I tell you what, that's wrong.
Well, personally, I read the report, and if I was the guy who ordered that investigation, investigating officer, asking me, that report was rubbish.
So why don't we let, give it to the public, let them decide how much rubbish it is?
Which part that was rubbish? The, the, the fact or the official aggression? Or how about, how about all the inconsistencies in the report? And I'm not going to.
What's the office, we can bring this up to discuss it.
I'm fine to send it to, to, to the DA, but I don't know about the issue.
Why?
Because you're going to be telling.
That's his opinion, that's why.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
My opinion doesn't matter, which is being for you. Your opinion is all over there. Your opinion is all over there.
That's not going to retain it right now, okay.
Your opinion is meddled in that report on every page.
Let's just put it out there for the people, and I think that's all right.
Yeah, we all have obviously passionate opinions about the report, and that's why I said let the public look at the report. They all were here, like I said, for the past two meetings, and they wanted to know where the report was at.
Investigation means the truth, not assumptions.
So you're saying that I do investigate.
There was a lot of assumptions.
Do you think they were lying?
Oh, yeah. On several occasions, yes, I believe so.
And all the witnesses were lying.
Opinion, opinion.
All the witnesses were all at.
So if they were all lying, what harm would it be to see the AG's office, and then they can find out that, where the lies were at? And I think ideal investigations would not lie and still be in business if that was their habit of lying when people hired them.
I agree with you, we should find out who the liars are in Holman and Cowan. Absolutely, and I think nobody better to do that than the AG's office. Objectively.
How did you find out the report was even out, because it wasn't made officially yet, we were, did you receive a copy?
You received it on April Saturday.
I didn't have it until the same time everybody did.
Oh, we just got it Tuesday. We just got it Tuesday.
I know.
You made a comment about doing a great investigation.
Yes, I did.
Well, how did you find out?
That was a joke.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that's a joke, yeah, you're a jerk.
Excuse me, is the public allowed to speak before this motion is voted upon? Being that commissioners are elected officials of the people? By the people?
There's no public comment on this, ma'am.
Thank you.
Not at this point.
Not at this point, that's right.
And I think it's, you bring a great point, ma'am, I think it's very, I don't know, I'm very embarrassed for the township that we won't let the citizen speak, and you want to just brush it all under the rug. Let the citizen speak, they're here. Thank you. We'll take a little question, we got a motion on the second on the floor.
I don't want to speak.
Should I add? Was, what was the motion, did I forget? Have we sent it to the AG's office?
Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda, that we send it to the AG's office.
We have a second.
Just say add it to the agenda, you're not saying that you want to send it to the AG's office.
All correct, that's what, that's what the commission says, add it to the agenda, send it to the AG's office.
You can vote no once it's added to the agenda.
Yeah, there's going to be another motion made.
There's going to be another motion.
Alright, go ahead.
All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? So add it to the agenda.
Okay, now there's time.
Public input. Ma'am?
Well, we should have a motion in a second.
Now, just to say, I'll make another motion, at this point, that we send this report to the Attorney General's office for an investigation of the criminal matters.
Second.
Now, public comment. Did you name that, Mr. Director?
My name's Kelly, I'm a resident of the township. I have some general questions regarding the report. I do have a question about Commissioner Gray's Facebook post. If the report was just made available to the commissioners April 12th, there was a posting that made an implication that Commissioner Harold was guilty on the crime. So it did imply that he could have had early information on the report. That's my first point I'd like to make. A second question I have is, the individuals that ideal investigations questioned, were they able to sign aut on their testimony? Is it signed reported testimony?
The report that I have in front of me, did everybody receive, there is no signatures or cases on any of them.
So the assumption could be made that hearsay, it's an opinion, it's an, it's an investigation by ideal forming their opinion, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, pardon me. I mean, obviously, the report we have in front of us is not sworn testimony, absolutely not. And that's why, in my opinion, we need to follow up with it with sworn testimony. Because based on what we have, some people say it's fact, it's fiction, it's innuendo, it's hearsay. We, that's left for us to decide, that's up to us to hand it to an objective authority to have them decide.
I completely agree, but I think before the people of Northampton take that step, this is a very serious allegation. And if the report is based on hearsay, I think before it goes in the direction of potential criminal investigation, we need to look into this a little bit further. That's an extremely serious allegation by an opinion of one man.
You don't see the report.
You're exactly right, we did an open records request, my husband was one of the individuals questioned.
I would gladly hand it to you right then.
Well, we could, I guess it was voted on, and we're not at this point.
Why?
Yeah.
I don't ask all that.
I'm not going to speculate on my husband, my husband's not going to speak for my husband, he's not here too. I wasn't involved in his interview. But the point is, when we were asked, if we could review to be sure that his testimony was accurate, we were denied. So the basis of this investigation from ideal is an opinion only.
That's exactly why it shouldn't be permitted.
So my next question, I have a few more questions, I would like to know, how many years Commissioner Harold has been serving in the township of Northampton? At this point, how many years?
Um, around twenty years.
Has there ever been an allegation of theft by Commissioner Harold in the past? Why?
And it, is that relevant?
Well, I have some questions that I think should be raised in the public eye. I would like to know why, when the news medias are reporting that this happened allegedly, approximately allegedly four years ago, why it was just brought to the attention of the public in 2016?
We didn't bring it to the attention, so you might have to ask the people that dig up, is my.
Okay, I have a question for you directly, Commissioner Gray. In the February 2016 minutes of Northampton Township, a resident, Rich Sinasi, asked who gave the information to the Norman Star. So my direct question to you would be, did you communicate with any employee of the Norman Star or any other media outlet, including newspapers or television, in regard to the millings issue, before a motion was carried to start this investigation at the February 17th meeting?
Can you repeat that?
Absolutely. Did you communicate with any employee of the Norman Star or any other media outlet, including newspapers and television, in regard to this millings issue, before the motion was made at the February 17th meeting?
No.
Because you were asked directly, and you did not answer the question according to the minutes.
No, I did not.
Your, your response.
Are you, let me interpret that, I, I, I don't know, I don't recall.
Every commissioner was asked in the February meeting that question, you were the only one that, your, your reply was, you helped the.
No, no, okay, the answer is no, I, I, okay.
Okay.
You're saying, yes, no.
Does this township have written policy regarding the distribution of items such as millings, stone, or pipe, and what they do with it? Does it have written policy, is there a policy, rules, regulations, anything?
Yeah, unfortunately, and I don't want to shoot something in the short circuit.
Bruce, I say one more thing, I mean, these sound like very good questions, that should be asked under sworn oath to, during testimony of an investigation or a trial or a hearing, that's not what we're here for. I would suggest that we proceed with a trial or a hearing or an investigation where these questions would be asked.
So are you denying any of my answers, as a taxpayer in this township, or are you denying my justice to my citizens?
Okay, hey, this isn't, the problem we're having here is, we're talking about placing something on the agenda, it's now on the agenda, there's a vote to be taken as to whether or not to send this to the AG's office. Better about.
And I have questions, I have questions surrounding this investigation, or would I like to answer?
And you're ordinarily, this is a public comment period. Okay, cannot a public debate period, where there's question and answers.
Do you consider topics of, if this is to the AG's office, not of the investigation?
It's actually not an informal question. So am I to be clear that I'm allowed to ask no more questions for answers?
I didn't say that, it's up to the board to decide.
Ask all your questions.
Okay, so my, my current question is, does the township have a policy regarding distribution of millings, stone, type, et cetera? Do they have written policy or a rule or regulation on what they do with it?
Okay, what we're doing, introducing the rights.
Do they provide those same materials to entities such as, including a school of forty, such as, such as, such as, such as, et cetera? Do they supply this with entities? My last question would be, since you have the report in your hands, I would like to know the value of the alleged missing millings versus the cause of the investigation, and actually, all costs involved with this investigation. Since the taxpayers are going to stand up for it. And that's all my questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just to say, generally, we take public input before we answer all the questions. So anyone else?
Anybody else? You say your name, I just direct please.
My name is Paul Carrick, I live at 11650 Dennis Circle, Northampton, Pennsylvania. When I became aware of this, I just used a term situation, I, I couldn't understand why we had this outside investigation, I didn't even know the name of the company. So I took it upon myself to call the district attorney's office in Green Park, and I was referred to the sheriff, I'm sorry, the sheriff's office, and I was referred to their investigator. And so, I, I asked a question here, I said, why didn't you guys not go to Green Park? The answer was, we thought it was appropriate to have an independent investigator investigate this situation. And I thought everybody voted on it. Now, what I'm hearing here tonight is, it's not independent. And it's not going to be released at a public, you can't have a boat waste. So I don't have any questions, but boy, I question what's going on here tonight.
Is there anyone else who wants to give any public comment? Anyone else want to give a public comment, say no.
Oh, actually.
Let's go.
Alright.
Did you, did you add it?
My name is May Delasky, 3050, Northampton. My husband is a major in the Army National Guard. He is also in Army National Guard with several members of Northampton Township Police Force. As you know, and I'll talk. It's been brought to my attention through his conversation, that there has been some discrepancies within the township, discrimination towards members of the military. As a resident who just recently moved here, I don't know how about a year ago we lived here. I take the rights of our men and women to vote right for us very seriously. And I would hope as a township, that we support that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can answer the first, the first set of questions, it was whether the township has a written policy on distributing pipe or other material, stone from public works, the answer was no. Do other, do other agencies, sewage authority, the water authority, are they able to get material from our department? The answer is yes, it's controlled, but they're able to get that if they're doing a job and want to borrow material from us and then return it. And I wouldn't have the value of millings or the, we don't have the cost of the investigation yet because we have the invoice. So someone else on this board might have an opinion of the cost, unless I wouldn't have one. Rich, am I accurate on what I said, one to two?
That's correct, Tom, yes.
That's correct, John, yes. I guess that's what I clarify what you said, John. We don't give anything away to other government agencies. They are away because it's close by, so they don't have to go to their main place, and then they would return whatever or stones will be taken.
Rich will give you a better answer than that. You're right, he'll explain that to you, kind of what they do.
Who keeps track of that? And how much they take?
Rich, can you answer the next question that potentially begs?
We do that. I mean, our, our owner operator, any kind of outside agency would request any type of material. And there's only been very few in the twenty years that I've been employed here in North Huntington. The request comes through the supervision. They would either contact myself or the Assistant Public Works Director tab file and, you know, make their request. We've given material to the ANTMA in the past because of emergency situations such as sewer line breaks. They don't always have material readily available. And of course, you know, they're, you know, part of, you know, the township also. And, you know, we work closely with them as they, you know, lend us things of different nature that we need to borrow from them. The water company, we've lent the water company stone also before because of emergency situations where they have a water break in North Huntington. We want to give service back to our residents, so we'll, we'll give them stone to be able to, you know, get the road back open and get service back to the residents. They always return it. I mean, in fact, they're quite generous. I mean, if they'll buy, they get a couple pockets of stone, they typically give us a truckload back. That's not what I was told. I said there's no record of anybody keeping track of it, according to Mike Dees. They just come and go, and you guys have to keep track of how much you get and how much you'll take back. I'd have to disagree with you, Mr. Harold, on that. I would. Anyhow, as I can continue, I can honestly say that in twenty years, there was one other, it wasn't an outside agency that we gave material, was a contractor who was doing work. He does work for the township that we would give material and that was a part of the agreement. We would provide the material to save money in the cost, and he did the work for us. Other than that, I can't recall the state ever coming to us and borrowing any types of material, let alone millings or anything to that nature as far as material goes. And even with the authority and the water company, there was never millings that we provided to them. It was always regular limestone, aggregate. Mr. Albert, do you have paperwork? How much goes out and how much comes back and keep records all that, is that correct? We don't. It's a one honesty system with our employees.
Anything else?
I have a question. This is from Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, when you were president of the board, did you conduct your own investigation into these millings that I alleged stole from my son?
No, I didn't. When I became aware of it and I can look back and probably tell you that they, I reported it to Manager Shepherd and Chief Vasceki. That, that was the extent of my investigation.
You didn't conduct your own investigation?
No.
Andrew Shepherd. Mr. Albert told me you were conducting your own investigation without the board approval. Did you were so big on going by the rules and regulations? So you conducted your own investigation without getting the board approval? And Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Albert told me that you're down here conducting the investigation?
Down where, sir?
Down, down the road department, where the millings are.
That's a lie. So either you're lying or they are.
No, you're lying, you're lying, but you don't want to tell the truth.
The whole world is lying, but you.
Yeah, right.
We've heard this story before. We're not a police officer. No, I can tell you that I looked it up, so I'm not misquoted. But I did report it to John and to Chief Vaskeki. And they, as far as I know, they did investigate, and I identified the person that told me. And I believe they spoke to them or whatever. I washed my hands of it. At that point, when I turned it over to them, I washed my hands of it. Because the person that told me said they were on to go public with it. And I said, well, I'm obligated to report it anyway. I went to the two people that I should go to. They, they followed up on it. To my knowledge, I think we talked about it, they followed up on it, basically said the same thing that I had said, which was, yeah, this person said it happened, but they're not willing to go public with it at this point. So that was the extent of it. If you want to talk about investigations, maybe we can talk about the one you and Mr. Vasenda attempted to do on the gasoline purchases down near Fort Worth.
We can talk about that.
Okay, did you, did you go through the manager at that point? When you were trying to hang some of the employees that were on your list that's been mentioned so many times here?
I was called by that gentleman about, and I have a tape pertaining to that. And I went away and I didn't have a chance to give it to Mr. Shepherd, but I have the tape. And I have a receipt that that gentleman never turned it in. It was an itemized bill, and his receipt just happened to get lost in all the shuffle.
And did you turn that over to Mr. Shepherd?
I just let back my case.
But this, your investigation with Mr. Vasenda took place back in January, I believe. And I actually raised this issue to John a couple weeks ago. And he told me, you know, we investigated that, the chief of police and John, back in, I believe it was October. So clearly after January, when you took over, you were out to hang the fact of your list of retaliation against the employees, which I believe is called official oppression, which is tied into this report, which everybody still hung up on, a couple hundred dollars or a thousand dollars worth of millings, that's insignificant compared to the other allegations in the report. You can make the millings, stealing millings takes money out of everybody's pocket.
You're saying I stole millings?
I'm saying, I'm saying the stealing of.
Say what you wanted to say, say it.
Well, that'd be ugly if you.
Yeah, well, say I stole a mill, that's what you wanted to say, say it.
No, you're saying that. And let's say you're right.
Okay.
If stolen millings can be replaced, not replaced, but that is, it gives people in the pocket book, you can correct that by writing the check. That goes away. And I mean, great that there are correspondence to it. The problem I have is the official oppression. The official oppression where you threaten people's jobs or.
Nobody's threatening nobody's jobs.
Okay, well, we don't know that, because.
Well, you know that, you're a term.
No, well, here's, we have the documents that seem to indicate that, but we need somebody to judge that.
A lot of time people look at their documents as a game test, and I do, let him sign.
No, it's better, it's better to ditch word testimony. Are you going to let me talk or you didn't?
Go ahead.
I'll yield to you. Go ahead, say whatever you have to say.
I said what I have to say.
Okay, okay, you're done? Then to me.
I'm done when I'm, you know, when I'm done.
You guys, we have one. Okay, we have one that sits to talk about military discrimination in.
Sorry, I think that's your opportunity, but I believe the one gentleman, I just don't want to have his comments go to waste. But he asked why we didn't go to Greensburg first. I think we kind of said that, but I, I believe, you know, we felt that going with the outside agency that had no affiliation with the township, or possibly had affiliation with maybe one of the board commissioners or one of the workers of the township. So going outside for an independent agency.
That was supposed to be independent.
Right, and most of us agreed that it was, or at least some of us.
I guess, I guess some of the commissioners, I, I myself do feel that it's independent, that they run a business. I don't think they would be in, in business if they weren't giving you a valid document, report, investigation. Some of the commissioners feel that it's not a unbiased report. They have that right, but I feel it's unbiased.
We could, we could end all of this discussion by voting yes to hand it over to somebody else, being the Attorney General, like I said, and wash our heads, and we don't have to talk about it again.
It's not an unbiased report when Rich Gray gets the results first. He puts it on Facebook.
I did not get the results first.
What's your comment?
I thought you had to know it.
What's your comment on Facebook?
I explained that.
Why did the chief know?
That's a check.
Anybody else? He told everybody before, that's right. So how did that happen if it was an unbiased investigation? How did that happen? He found out when, so neither of the board members knew about it. How did that happen?
First of all, we don't have any proof that he knew about it.
We do.
Or you go gather using them when he isn't here.
No, I'm not, I'll tell him, just face, tell him, I'm here, I'll tell him.
I think last time you told him he was a liar.
I did, he was a, he was a crazy liar.
It's like everybody else, yeah, you did. You called him a professional. I haven't reached that level yet, I guess.
And he talked, he talked to John Shepherd, he told John Shepherd, so I'm not saying anything that's out of turn. So you stick up for him, Duane, stick up for him.
Okay. It's kind of like I said before last time, when both you and Mike both stated that the chief was lying, but you had no problem reading his statements he sent in Johnson or, or mail. But then once he stated on the public, you said all of a sudden he's not a liar. If I was misquoted, I would say right then and there, when I got that memo.
If I was misquoted, because what he said there, what he said there was not, was in a memo.
It was exactly where it was, or it wasn't in a memo.
No, it wasn't.
Did you remember, you have a thing to read? Is that, you know, you put your big white pants on?
With your respect, my mother.
Stop it. First of all, okay. Working on your life.
Like you say, this is really embarrassing, you know.
We have a.
We have a daughter acting like children. I should have been here for all these years.
I sit by day. Actually, we. We have a report here that we paid for, that we had an independent person or company go out, talk to people. No, they're not sworn statements, they're not police officers. They're, yes, they could be looked at as assumptions, but they talked to people and people gave information. It doesn't look like the report in thirty-nine years of police practice that I've been on. I think it needs to go to an agency that can honestly investigate it with people under oath, whether it be a grand jury, and here we go again, like back in the eighties, or the Attorney General's Office. I agree with not sending it up to Greensburg because I feel it's too close to home. Why is it close to home?
So.
Because we know what happened with the murder investigation today, and I'm not going to do it. Yeah, I was involved in it, and what's the marker, Rich, saying, you know, I got cleared.
Okay, keep going.
Actually, now that we have to address that just yet, because there's a motion on the floor. We were having a discussion, we were taking public input on the motion.
Okay.
Which, on the motion, everybody's had an opportunity to speak on the motion. We all know what it is. Now, I will call for the motion, which ends discussion, and let's vote on it, and let people stand where they stand.
If you're pushing the floor to send it to the Attorney General's Office. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No. Roll call.
Roll call.
Bruce, again, for Dave to abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Hages?
Yes.
Mr. Rotany?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Vasenda?
No.
Mr. Casera?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
And you're here for the best interest of our community.
Right.
We all have a right to know out here. I think the rest needs to follow a right to know report.
Any other board comment? We got one on military discriminating. Anybody happy?
I'd like to have it investigated and see what's going on. In the motion, in the motion. Oh, good motion. I'll make a motion. Do we have to look into it by military, if the personnel being discriminated against?
Oh, we need to.
Yeah, the part of the meeting that's going to make that a motion.
Yeah, the question is.
I think we need to address the citizens' input.
Can I, can I add something?
I think we have to.
What do we want to do with military? Anybody have any questions on it, concerns? Well, that came from the public.
I mean, we have to put a motion, I'm not sure where we're at here. I would like to.
That was a citizen's.
Yeah.
That was a response.
Yes. So I can respond.
Didn't military.
I think clearly, no. This last, this last piece is absolutely right, we shouldn't discriminate. And I think we've actually talked about this as a board before, when the allegation was raised by a board member, or a couple of board members. And the decision at that point was that if there's some discrimination going on, it needs to be fixed, it needs to be addressed. And, and are we saying that hasn't been done? If there, if there is any law that we're not following regarding veterans, we need to follow it. We should have been, and if we're not, there needs to be some consequences. But I think the board itself is unaware of that. We did have a discussion. I mean, we're all, we're all real aware of this. So is there an issue that was not addressed or in our conversation of it?
I believe, I believe there's an issue out there that still hasn't been addressed. From a House Bill eighty-eight, I believe, that was back in two thousand thirteen. I agree, we're all going to date on individual getting military paid back pay. I don't know if that had, I don't, I don't believe that had been addressed yet.
Well, I guess the question would be why? Well, we've had this discussion with John and Solicitor Dykes, and they were to address these things. Or at least respond.
I'll respond, I believe the person's been paid, unless you want to pay him for time that he didn't, additional time that he didn't pay. That's my opinion.
What's the act, what's it say, the act? The state law? What's that state? Anybody know?
I don't know, Tony referenced it.
It's that state act, what act was that? I'm still idiot, still idiot. Does anybody know what it says or what it refers to? Harold, have you shot somebody on that?
House Bill eighty-eight guarantees members of the military, guard reserve, fifteen days of military leave. An additional fifteen days if they're deployed for over thirty days of military leave.
I believe that additional fifteen days is not only for state agencies, not for local. We, we looked at that, with the solicitor's and legal opinion on that. Craig, your office members did that. That's for state agencies.
I was just going to say, if, if it makes everybody comfortable, let's have John and Bruce look at it again, provide us something in writing, which I think they already did once.
Correct.
And confirm it.
Well, let's have the military people come and address it. The people who are in question.
They're welcome to come to any public meeting like anybody else.
Okay, we'll have them come and address it.
We did have a meeting scheduled, you didn't want to attend.
That was an executive session. You're just saying it needs to be public, yeah?
Doesn't matter whether it is in a room or out here.
I, I do think.
You didn't want to attend it.
I do think that the township needs to be educated on the U.Serra law and what it entails. That's my opinion speaking as a military.
I, I would be completely fine with that. We can't, you know, give enough.
I believe at the end of last year, there was an incident where a township director tried to discipline an individual in the military for a violation that clearly violated the federal law, U.Serra, what he was trying to do. That could have ended up extremely bad for the township, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars in losses. Now, I know they stopped the joint, which is good, but it never should have gotten that far. And I believe when the individual was questioned about it and he was given the U.Serra law, his reply back was, well, I do not read it that way. U.Serra law is pretty point blank in what it says.
Was that military person made whole?
As far as I know, in that case, I'll, I'll also understand there's been multiple E.S.G.R. complaints about this township. I don't know if y'all come all those. So, but that tells me there's an issue with military members, if there's violation of U.Serra and E.S.G.R. must be.
I think a gentleman in the military, if you want to be asked how many.
Yes, okay, and I'll, I'll keep on trying to, I'm honest with you, this is I am biased, because for those of you who don't know, I am Lieutenant Colonel of the United States Army National Guard. So, yes, I, there's a soft spark in my heart for people wearing a uniform, because I've been wearing it for twenty-five years itself.
That's why I ask for your definition and your opinion.
So if, if this is, I think the township needs to be educated on this, most definitely. We can't have it before a director goes around saying he reads the federal law different than what it says. So, and I can elaborate on that because I spoke to the individual and I know exactly what happened. So if you want me to elaborate. So, if you want me to elaborate, I'll elaborate on it, straight up, because honestly, I was involved with a mission that he was, he was trying to be crucified over.
If we're saying that staff needs to be better trained in a certain area, then I think everybody's all for it. And if there was an omission by error, by ignorance, then it needs to be corrected. But airing this all in this format is not helpful to anyone. I mean, if, if we find out somebody's deficient in a certain skill, we want to train them, rather than hang them. So, can we move forward in that regards? I mean, we have paid professionals, including, when I say that, not just including, but John and Bruce, that are supposed to be guiding us on these things, rather than having individual board members become the S.M.A. to some matter of expert on everything. We should bring them witnesses to their attention and get the training that you say, I don't even know what the acronym you, you said stands for. That, that's their job. So, can we make it better by training them, or looking into it?
I believe so.
So, why don't we look that route, instead of trying to hash this out like this, it's, it's ugly, that, that one's right, it's embarrassing.
I know.
Everybody, everybody appreciates the knowledge, they're going to thank you for your service. I mean.
And I think they should be allowed to come here and.
They are, nobody has done that, that's like, this time you said that. Anybody can help in any meetings.
I'll make sure they come.
I'm sure you will.
I will.
Just, just to everybody's word, U.S.A.R.A. is Uniform Service Member Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. It is federal law, and it's pretty well spelled out. And basically, it protects the rights of individuals in the guard reserve that are called up to act of duty, because flat out, I, I can get a phone call right now and I'll be out for it, and gone. And that's it, and my board would be good with that, there's, there's no question, he's got to be good with it, you know, pay for it to come later.
I, I know an individual that does that, that does train on U.S.A.R.A. and E.S.G.R. for a federal cover. I can get him to type to John and have that set up for training.
And for the record, Commissioner Harold, you were the one that wanted to discuss it in executive session, and I was the one that documented the fact that they need to come to a public meeting. So, don't feel like you're getting over on me by having them come to a meeting, I've been begging for these things to be public.
Trying to get over on you, if I was, don't worry, you know it. And I, I'd like to say, make one more, I, I was out of line, I apologize to Mr. Hages for calling about your mom.
I'll take care of it. Anything else?
Where, so where do we go with the investigation? Something has to be determined, we're not going to let it go, we're not going to let it sweep away the run, we're not going to forget about it.
The board may not want to do this, that's fine, but just a quick consultation with Solicitor. I think you could, in executive, in executive session, discuss releasing the report. I know you, you probably aren't going to do that, but there's maybe some reasons to do it, some reasons not to. And there's quite some legal issues that, that you may want to discuss, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but I think you could have that discussion.
I guess, I mean, it's.
You don't have to do that.
Well, like I said, I think that, you know, the word differs three to three, I don't think that's going to change, you know, obviously, some of the board members.
You don't know that, I, I, I think it warrants some discussion before release, that's my opinion, and I'm going to stand by that. It's straight off the way in the middle that John wrote, he put it, this will later release to the public.
He didn't, but we were the ones that voted for the investigation, and I had all intents and purposes of releasing it to the public. They should know, they should be educated, like you said, education's a great thing.
I agree.
And we need to put it out as far as, personally, be educated, so I'm not a military expert, so yeah, I think the public should know what's going on in the township.
Hey, 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 I don't have a problem with that, I, I would just like to discuss some of the stuff that's in, in this name before we release it to the public, because here, here's the problem I have, there are multiple misspellings in here. There's addresses in here, they're in one line of system address, and the next line is system address, there's people's names that are spelled wrong, and there's, and there's other issues in here. If I was putting a report together, I would think, number one, I would take the time to proofread it, make sure that everything in here is accurate and correct. If there's misspellings and, and, and people's names are wrong, and they can't even, they're talking about ten officers, what's labeled C.P.D., C.P.D.W., P.D.C.W.? Are they talking about the same person, or are they not talking about the same person? So, there's contradictions in this report that I have issues with, alright? So, not that I don't want to put it out there to the public, but this, this makes sure that the damn report's accurate before we put it out there to the public.
So, you're going to put it out there?
I'm okay with that.
Once, it won't, as long as it is accurate, and, and there's no, the, the contradictions in there, but I'm telling you right now, I've, I've had to do investigations for military, if I want to hand the report this to the county officer in order to, with those, that type of misspellings and, and contradictions in there, I would have got my ass handed to me, straight up. So, that's where I stand with that, just as everybody knows, I'm not trying to keep it from the public, but damn it, if we're going to put it out there to the public, make sure that the report is accurate and there's no crap.
And here's, here's the problem with that, and I understand where you're coming from, and I tend to agree with you, there may have been some editorializing in the report that didn't need to be there. But what I see, and I think John did a good job of redacting the things that didn't really need to be there. However, what's going to happen, we all know what's going to happen in an executive session, is it's going to be a three-hour debate about what's fact, what's fiction, what's opinion, what's interview, you know, quotes. I just don't see that going anywhere, but it's going to come out on, I think the debate for reports eleven pages or ten pages, something like that, it's going to come out as one paragraph or a half a page. And that's all what the public deserves for their money.
I, I think that's probably what the benefit of sending it to another agency is, is they're, they, they can decide, and they can call people on sworn testimony, and they can get the names spelled right, and get the addresses right, and that, that's the benefit of it.
I agree, I mean, I can understand your apprehension about handing it to the public in a shared forum, but I don't think it should be up to edit, up to us to edit it. It needs to go to somebody else to edit. And, or maybe redo, not a township expects. Because you know, tell me I'm wrong, Harold, you know what goes on behind their door.
How about this bridge, a month? I just, I got the gust of concern, so. I'm fine with sending it to the DA. I, I know, I, listen, I, I, you, you've been doing this a hell of a lot longer than I have. Well, this is a military, and I've got it, alright, but I've been doing this for four freaking months, alright? I spent more time dealing with this crap since I started doing, since, since I've taken over, you know? Well, that, that come to me since last year, the last twenty-one minutes. You know, now all of a sudden, I'm, I'm debating this, debating that, debating all this other crap, alright? Alright, so fine, the, 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 the DA.
I don't like the DA. I don't like the DA.
Because I, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to tell you why, because you mentioned somebody's name, and I have a role.
Okay.
That's my opinion, and you're not going to change it, so don't get me wrong.
I know, just what you've made up for mine, I just don't know, we've seen out of the appointment of the two of us. You, 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 I, I, that's an excuse, I want to go to an objective route, if we get into the politics.
You say, are you on objective route?
Yes, I am.
Why?
Because there's a very close. Because there's a very close relationship, political relationship between Mr. Harold and Mr. Beck.
That sounds true.
Well, I also, I'm also going to go on record, saying, whenever we decided to do this, I also put it out in any email through the board that I was in a lot in favor of using ideal investigations.
But you did vote yes to the meeting, right?
I did.
I, I, afterwards, I, I think.
We did decide on ideal investigations, after, hey, we decided to investigate.
No, Mr. Gray made the suggestion that ideal investigations.
We voted yes to use ideal investigations.
Actually, Mr. Shepherd did.
Yeah, and we all voted yes to use them, you can check the records.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, after we voted, he said, I believe, I believe it was, I believe he said, I voted for the motion, I was.
We made a motion, because we have to make a motion on who to do it with, just not to do it.
No, I believe most wants to have it investigated, a lot do want it.
Well, I, I have to take it.
Motion included, yeah.
Included that.
And you did, you changed your mind, and you have that right to, and that was when, I believe, Commissioner Gray said that other board members sending emails, let's halt this and not use ideal investigations.
I just said to hold it, I just said this, I'll use ideal investigations.
And that's why I did talk to you when I said, I don't know whether I should send the official, or Mr. Martino.
So, it's what we do, is the DA, you have your option?
That's my only option, I don't, I mean, that's the only one I feel comfortable with.
And I don't? So, am I not allowed to have my opinion on that?
Absolutely.
I guess, first here, the attorney up here, is there any other agency that seem kind of divided other than the A.G.'s office and the D.A.?
There may be another route to get into the right agency.
Or let's just send it to both, send it to both, or which is three-three, correct? Send it to both agencies, see what they both come up with. Send it to both agencies, that way, you know, there's been question on the testimonies here, let both agencies have it. And if one wants to do something with it, they can, if the other one doesn't, then that's fine, send it to both.
Good.
I, I, I'll make that a motion if someone wants to second it.
I'll say you're not.
You're going to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to put, another motion on the floor to have it sent to both agencies.
Well, all those who, all those who favor to say aye.
Aye.
Or who say no. I have. So, I'll do it again.
Alright, I'll make, I'll make that motion that we send the, the investigation conducted by ideal investigations about stolen road millings, sent to the A.G.'s office and the D.A.'s office.
Do I have a second?
At, yeah, at the same time, yeah, obviously.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
So, can I have a question, what about the?
Yes, I'm sorry.
What about the state police, where they investigate it through PANDO and everything now? Well, it's not a state case, it's not.
Yeah, I, I'll modify that motion, so, and write the, be unbiased, and let different agencies look at it, and if they see fit to do something, so, I guess send it to the state police, all three, state police, the D.A.'s office, and.
I modify my schedule.
Public input, do you have any public input on this?
Good idea.
That was good. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, dig your name and address, please.
Austin Gray, I just had a question for Mr. Dice, about something you said earlier. Well, can I correct my interpretation, please, correct me? Hey, you said, any individual who's worked with this investigation could take it to an agency, if there are any questions.
Please, clear.
I'm correct.
That's right.
Thank you, that's all.
Tell me about that. Can you take the name and address for record, too?
And of course, your report, you came one thousand and one hundred and fifty. I know there's discrepancies in this report, contradiction, contradiction to, uh, mispronouncing of names, you know? Watching everybody argue over it, it's not a good thing, but on the other hand here, if you're not satisfied with the report, send it back to that company that did the investigation, have them clean it up, or just don't pay the invoice on it until they clear it up and clarify, if you get some clarification, and there's no Indiana or Indianos.
You want the?
Yeah, thank you. On this, and then look at it again, and proceed, but from the way I'm sitting here and looking at this and listening to it, nobody's happy with the report. So, are we going to pay the invoice on it, or bill for it, since no one's happy about it? Or have them redo it, clean it up, then if you want to send it to all these agencies, do it then, which I'm in favor of. But that's where I stand on this right now.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address?
Rick Smoski, eight sixty-four, Pennsylvania. I have one question, as I look across the table, here everybody who represents this township as township commissioners. You need to have a right to the public to vote for us, not against us getting this investigation. An outside concern is the best for everybody here, the public, the board, keeps everybody out of it, keeps their country dry. Now, why you would vote against not having a dissent to a general, as Attorney General, is beyond me, because I've lived here all my life, it's true, no matter which direction you go locally, there's somebody that's related to it, it doesn't matter who. I'm saying anybody up there, but somebody knows somebody, somebody knows somebody here or there. But I think by going to the Attorney General, each one of you look at yourself and say, I represent this community, I think the public needs that correct vote, that's where it should go, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir. Take your name and address.
Keith Davis, ninety-nine forty-one, Buckingham Place. How about the U.S. Attorney General, that way we keep the state in love and they're in out of it, the U.S. Attorney General, we love their name and tie, and we can all go to Washington and play.
Thank you, sir.
I, so, all right, let me get this straight, we're, we're at the A.G., D.A., and State Police.
Correct.
I have a mission with State Police. Mr. Montchard is the next, is a former State, State Police Officer.
So, you're questioning the State Police Officer is not going to do a honest job on it?
Just concerned.
I, I would, I would hope that a State Police Officer would do an honest job and look at it.
I would hope so too, if that's not always the case, yeah.
That's why we're going to send it to free agencies, isn't that the idea, Austin, that you're going to get for agencies?
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying.
So, we'll send it to free agencies, State.
My concern is.
And if, I think that, that would be a good thing, if we see something that's unseen, that's somebody's state police, then maybe they'll pick something up that, they ought to take a look at.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who say no? I have.
So, can you give us a timeframe on when you will do this?
I can do, do it within a few days, I guess, the question I would have, although I don't want to have a large debate about it, is, and I think I know the answer, you know that, Rich, you had mentioned the report I give, you have some actions.
I believe, I believe the motion would have been for the whole report unredacted, I think that's the only way, you can't hold back information from the other agencies.
I just wanted to clarify.
And, and I think it should take place by the end of day tomorrow. I don't think it's a big deal, we know all these agencies, we know everybody, go to somebody downstairs, they'll hook you and thank the person with the right person, and just get it out of our hands. I don't want it lingering over a weekend, it's just going to cause more dissension, more emails, whatever, whatever, but get it to somebody tomorrow.
I'll be in the office all day tomorrow.
Can, can we have assurance that that will happen?
Unless I'm not here, which I don't play on my being here, but if, if not, Mr. Turley will handle, one of us will be here.
There you go.
But I play on being here.
Where Mr. Does?
He, one of verse three, is he can handle it. I play on being here.
Say that, Bruce.
I said the assurances are given.
Question, George Jared.
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no? I have.
Do we have to have those?
All those who are in turn.
Well, I think it should be fine.
Executive second, yes, or any?
I'm sorry.